Let me call to order this. Are we August 7, 2024, a meeting of Pottstown Borough Council as a committee of the whole? Would you rise for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge to the flag? Present.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under the God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll start with the subcommittee reports. Infrastructure, Councilor Lebedinsky, anything to add?
No, it's in your packet.
We've got all that. Ordinance review, Councilor Proskel.
I believe we'll be meeting next week.
Okay. Economic development, Ms. Lee Clark.
Barely got comfortable in my seat. Good evening, councilors, Madam Mayor. So, well, Zach has it queued up, so we'll start this way. I, this is video?
Do you want to do that?
No, we'll do it first. This is a video that we just had produced. It's hot off the press. I have to put a caveat on it. It will be come series. This is our first attempt. We were supposed to, with our marketing folks outside, we're supposed to keep it to two minutes. You will see that it's running three minutes and three seconds. So, yes, there is, not everybody is included in it, but we promise that we have a full set of lists and we will continue to put these videos out. The video is for an external audience. It is to let the external audience in the development community and the investment community know how special a place Pottstown is. And we are more than just a street, so. Can I just say something to you?
Where's?
That got me a little choked up.
Right.
I don't admit that easily, but it's beautiful.
Come on. You gotta have Fed in there. You gotta have Fed in there.
We'll get there. We'll get there.
Next video.
Yeah, next video. Next video. And tonight, I don't often get, obviously, Mr. Keller is on Pates Board, but I don't often have a board member with me here, so I'd like to recognize Dave Crable, who is here this evening for Pottstown area economic development. Well, he's here for another reason, but I'm gonna claim him too. All right. So, there's just two other announcements that I would like to make. One is, for the first six months, Pottstown has gained 22 businesses from January to June, so.
I'm glad.
It's, it's a big deal.
I'm glad for you.
Definitely a big deal. And they have not all been, yeah, they haven't all been retail, so that's what we're trying to also show in these, these videos. The other thing is really a public service announcement. I'm on the advisory committee for the Montgomery County Planning Commission's comp plan, the advisory committee, and so Engage Monco, I'd like to encourage all of you, there are surveys on a variety of things, so please make sure that you get out on their website, So, please go out there. There's things on transportation and infrastructure and housing and parks and trails, and you're gonna wanna go out and let your voices be heard of what you wanna see in the next comp.
We have that pinned on our Facebook page, so anybody that would like to go and take the survey to really have a say in the future planning of not just Pottstown but the region, please go and fill it out. It's open to elected officials, community members, anyone. So, thanks. You covered one for me.
Oh, good. Thank you. Okay, so that is my report for economic development. Would you like me to talk about land bank?
Yes, me.
Okay. So, the land bank board did identify two properties that they were interested in acquiring. One has been pulled for the tax sale because it's been paid in full, but we do believe tomorrow at the judicial sale, the 633 Walnut Street will be awarded to the Pottstown Land Bank. And that is my report.
Thank you. And this evening, reporting on human relations, Lisa.
So, Marcia can't be here. She sprained her ankle pretty badly, so I hope she's feeling better if she's watching. She just wanted to let everybody know that the August Human Relations Commission meeting is on Tuesday, August 13, at 6:00 PM in council chambers, and all are invited to attend, and I hope some of you come out.
Okay, thank you. Anyone here from the library? Or online? Nope? Okay, Ricketts Community Center, we do have a report. Is Joe on? No? Okay. Pottstown School District, Councilor Lindsay, I know you're here.
So, I'm going to do my report next month.
Okay.
So, we'll make it longer.
All right, we can do that. We'll be foregoing the solicitors' general discussion this evening, since we have a couple of presentations. How about the report from our mayor? Mayor Henry?
Thank you, President Weyand. Good evening, everyone. Since last time, I will be brief. July was busy. I just wanna thank the Amys and the Go Fourth volunteers for a fantastic Fourth of July extravaganza. If you weren't here, please come next year because it's just a fantastic, fantastic day and weekend. So, thank you all for that. One of our residents, Samantha Miller, wrote a book called The Goose Waltzer, and she had a reading and a book signing at The Collective, which I went to, which was such a cool space. And I just, it was fantastic. I can't wait to read her book, and please go check out The Collective and check out the book. I had some very lengthy meetings with County Commissioner DiBello, and we are working on a comprehensive plan for addressing homelessness with my advisory committee and the county centered on Pottstown, obviously. I assisted a prospective student in registering for classes at the Montgomery County Community College. I would say that if you are ever thinking of taking a class, do not be intimidated. They are so nice over there and patient, and they will hold your hand and go through what classes you need to take, you know, what requirements you have, how to apply for financial aid, and they're just so wonderful over there, and they have some really cool classes, so check those out. I wanna thank Cosmic Art Studio for use of their space. Don't forget, on Thursdays, that Cosmic Art Studio is art night. It's $5 from 7:00 PM to midnight, and you can just go in and do art. They have the art supplies there, and the studio is ready for you to use. Oh, I wanted to thank Russell Stinton and the Sweat Chasers. We did a cleanup on High and Franklin Street. Thanks to The Borough and Rotary for picking up the bags. We also had, someone came and delivered donated mulch, and we mulched the flower beds, and it looked pretty great. The carousel was packed at their family day, and if you haven't played mini golf in our little mini golf green, please do so before the season ends. Craig Calistra and Joe Cerici and I judged the fantastic talent show at the Tri-County Senior Center last Friday. We have, Pottstown is filled with so many talented and confident adults, I have to say. I mean, from dancing to jokes, it was fantastic. They're really doing great things over there. I feel like maybe they give out gold with their meals because there's no parking anywhere, and it is jam-packed every day. So, thanks to their leadership, things are going well over there. And I wanna thank the Johnsons in Ward Four, Ternita, for another fantastic summer block party.
They're not in Ward Four.
Two.
Three.
What?
The Johnsons are in Ward Three.
I'm just gonna give it to Ternita, though.
I have enough.
Sorry.
I don't need them.
Well, thank you, Dawn, for having some wonderful residents. Again, the Johnsons did a fantastic job.
They will do.
Yes, they do. And I beat Lisa ping pong, so I felt some redemption a little bit.
You didn't have to go there.
I want to thank the Hill School for hosting our community leaders breakfast meeting this morning. Real quick, coming up, unless there's gonna be a rain date on Thursday?
Yeah, go ahead. I was gonna announce it. Go ahead.
Okay.
Yeah.
At 1:30 is our ribbon cutting at Memorial Park for Bridge.
No.
Is there a rain date?
No, so it'll, it's rain or shine, unless it's severe thunderstorm or really strong winds, so, you know, we'll let you know if anything changes before 1:30 tomorrow.
I'm excited. Friday, the 9th, from 11:00 to 2:00, at Coventry Mall, the Community Health and Dental is having their health fair and health screenings. It's National Health Center Week, so go check that out. I believe Monday, the 12th, from 5:00 to 7:00 on the corner of Beach and Charlotte, Hearts for Humanity will be having their first annual Harvest Festival, so I think bringing the children. I think Shawna is here. August 14th at 5:00 PM, Montgomery County Bar Association is having a happy hour at JD Radigan's, I guess, pun intended, so if you are a member of the bar, please come join us. And the 31st, from 10:00 to 2:00, The Deviators are doing another cleanup near Tenth City. We also have the car show that day, and then the following day, and Jamie's here, so I'm not gonna steal his thunder, but there's, Jamie has a surprise for everyone after. The Lowe Show is just a surprise. It's fantastic. So, it's like a car show all weekend long, but he does the Lowe Show, and that's gonna be on the 1st. And then tickets are still available, I believe, for Fete en Blanc, which is the 6th of September. And the Pet Fair is the following day, on the 7th. And, oh, sorry, one more thing. On the 21st of September, the hospital is having their drive-through flu vaccine clinic. You literally just have to get in your car and drive, and they will give it through you, through your window. That's 8:00 to 11:00. I'm fairly sure you do not need to register, but please check their website just in case. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Very good. And our manager, Mr. Keller.
Yes, thank you, and good evening, everyone. Well, thanks to the mayor and Peggy, two items I had on my report got knocked off, so, hey, teamwork makes dream work, right? But I do have a couple other pertinent updates for you. We got an update from our paving contractor. The Borough's roadway project is expected to begin closer to early fall. The reason for this is there's a temporary shutdown at a local asphalt plant, but that's expected to open back up in September, so we'll be getting started with our roadway paving then. An update on the stormwater arch project at the former Pottstown Hospital site at 1200 High Street. We did have our pre-construction meeting last week for that, and right now, the timeline for that is about eight to 10 weeks. It'll take the fabricator contact to manufacture the aluminum arches for that span, and potentially they're looking at starting in October or November for that work, so that'll be in full swing. Citizens Leadership Academy, the Fall 2024 Session is now open for enrollment to anyone over the age of 18 or, and/or owns a property or business within the borough boundaries. There's a background check that's required, and you have to commit to the entire program. So, it's a no-cost, interactive civic education program designed for borough Pottstown residents, property owners, businesses, others interested in understanding the borough's operations, policies, and procedures. So, space is limited to 20, so if you're interested, please visit our website to sign up for the Fall Session. Another item I wanted to mention regarding the Pottstown Borough Authority, at their last meeting, they did agree to increase the water rates for the next three years, so they're, they're agreeing to increase 25 cents per cubic foot in 2025, 20 cents per cubic foot in 2026, and 15 cents per cubic foot in 2027. They also agreed to increase their bulk rate, which is the water that we sell to customers as well as other municipalities by 50 cents per gallon, per 1,000 gallons, raising the rate to 408 to 458. And it's been, since 2021, since we've raised rates for customers, and about 2019, since we've raised rate for the bulk customers. And the reason for this is, you know, inflation, as you've all experienced, but more appreciatively is the inflation in chemicals. Since 2019, we had a 300% rise in chemical costs. We also have additional DEP mandates that are required at, at the water plant. So, in order to maintain our current capital plan, which replaces about $1 million of water pipe every other year, we need to raise the rates to try to keep up with inflation in some of these key chemicals. So, the next step would be to have the authority ratify this decision, and then it would be on council's list for approval in the upcoming months. So, if there's any questions, please feel free to reach out to me. And just to note, you see a lot in the paper about privatization of water and sewer infrastructure. Our rates are, we did analysis of the tri-county region, and our rates are about 25% lower than Redding, which is a public system, and 75% lower than Limerick. So, still, we're the best rate in the region, which is really a testament to our authority members, our staff. We work very hard every day to control cost and deliver quality services to our rate payers that are located both within and outside the borough. One final update on the Halloween Parade, the current status on that is that there has not been an organization that has stepped forward to run the Halloween Parade, so we are currently actively reaching out to local organizations to see if somebody would wanna head that up, but as of now, there are no takers. And that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. We now have scheduled a presentation from West Pots Grove.
Good evening. I'm Debbie Razner. I'm the manager for West Pots Grove Township. I'm here tonight on behalf of our board. Three of our commissioners are here tonight, several of our residents, and a representative of Venture Grove. They've asked me to come and briefly introduce you to our Veterans Memorial Park project, so I'm going to go through a brief introduction, existing, our proposed master plan, how it relates to the airport plan, since it is adjacent to the airport, and then there'll be a couple other people that would like to have some words. So, tonight, we just wanna briefly touch on the history of the current site, the proposed master plan, the airport, potential land acquisition, and how they are all tied together. The plan that you see in front of you is, or was, the former community pool. This is on the one of two parcels the township owns that are adjacent to the airport that made up the pool property. The project is located at 953 Von Steuben Drive, directly adjacent to the municipal airport. The plan showed it was a main pool, baby pool, locker rooms, restrooms, office space, a full concession and kitchen area, parking, and in the port, the next slide, please, shows both parcels. The parcel to the west includes an existing pavilion and open space. And then the next slide shows some issues we had when it was the pool and issues we see that may continue as we try to redevelop this site into a veterans park. One being that access was restricted from Von Steuben and Anthony Wayne Drive through the current housing development. That was the only point of access for the pool. It was also limited to parking, 17 spaces with 280A. There was a gate for maintenance off of an undeveloped right away off of Burke Street, but that was simply for our public works department to access the pool area for maintenance. Access from one, the one property, from the eastern portion to the western portion was through a gate access. That was the only way anyone using the main pool area could get to the pavilion. And then the final thing that I just wanna mention, I'll get into that a little bit later, is there was also, at one point, a lease with the airport to accommodate some overflow parking for the pool. What you see in front of you is some of the parking issues mentioned previously were addressed through the lease agreement, which is in place from 2012 to 2016 for overflow parking. The figure on the left shows the area that was included in the 2012 lease agreement. The figure on the right shows the area the township would like to acquire from the borough to provide a permanent two-way access and proposed parking from Burke Street to Von Steuben Drive. This additional piece of land would also allow for additional parking. The area is slightly larger than the previous lease area, but it is under, a little under an acre. This aerial view was just provided to show, the red dot you see is where the existing pool property is, and you can see how it's adjacent to the municipal airport. There's also an open space, another open space property that lies adjacent to your hangars that falls between, behind Glasgow and Pulaski Street. That is another open space area that the township also owns. That's about a 2.5 acre area. Next, we're gonna discuss the master plan. What you have in front of you is our proposed conceptual master plan I provided as an overlay to the airport property. In September of 2022, the township was awarded $15,000 in grant funding through Pottstown Area Health and Wellness to assist with the development of a master plan. We developed a planning committee, which consisted of myself, several residents, a Venture Grove representatives, and a couple of our commissioners. We worked over the summer in 2023 to develop a concept plan that would honor our veterans but also provide a variety of amenities and activities for all ages to enjoy the park as a whole. In the planning, in planning the layout of the park, it became apparent that parking and access would still be restricted if we were unable to acquire a little more land. As the concept plan shows, additional land would allow for the two-way access and additional parking that I mentioned previously. This slide lays out the list of amenities and activities we would like to incorporate into the master plan. Existing features and facilities to remain would be the covered pavilion, which has electric, the office space, full kitchen, restroom, and locker rooms, which are all part of the existing main building, which would remain intact, the basketball court, and the open space areas. Amenities we would like to propose to incorporate are Veterans Memorial Garden area, and a Venture Grove inclusive playground area, a paved walking trail, and a pickleball court. Now, the next slides, I'm just gonna, I would like to just briefly walk you through the park itself. Veterans Memorial Garden area would be at the eastern end of the park. That's adjacent and uphill from the basketball court. Pickleball court would be at the western end of the park. This would be adjacent to the existing pavilion, and the walking trail would essentially go around the court and provide access to the pavilion as well. The walking trail, the part, the plan you see in front of you shows that it connects all areas of the park. The basketball court, I do wanna make a correction. The funding that we already, we've received to refurbish the parking, or the basketball court, was provided by PM RPC. That's intended to be refurbished and fenced so that it can be utilized even after the main park is closed, so that kids can use the park. There'll be lights. They can use the park after dark, but only up until car fuel. Venture Grove inclusive playground, this will take, this will be a main feature where the main pool was. The next two slides provide the conceptual plan for the park. Yep, keep going. And then the airport plan. So, the airport plan was introduced to us when we got to the point where we knew addressing the parking and access was critical to the master plan the township had envisioned for this park area. We reached out to the borough manager and asked if we could have a discussion with Borough Council about acquiring a small, small portion of a, a small portion of a regularly-shaped land from the airport, and he provided this plan for our reference. The plan is dated December 2008, and to date, the township is unaware of any progress on implementing this plan, and therefore hopes the borough would consider modifications to accommodate both the park and any future plans for the airport. This figure shows an excerpt from the airport plan that was provided by the borough and an excerpt from our proposed conceptual plan. The area that's highlighted in red shows the impact to the airport plan, and then on our conceptual plan, it would show how if we were able to accommodate additional land, how it would provide for that two-way access and additional parking that would be, we feel is crucial to the park development. That's basically our wealth through the project at where it stands at this time. I would like to introduce- I would like to introduce Patty Graham from Adventure Grove to speak on the playground portion, and then I believe one or two of our commissioners would like to have a few words.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. Everybody fine? Adventure Grove, I'm the president of Adventure Grove, and this all came about, I'm going into my 15th year of being a school director for Pots Grove, and I try to get to as many clubs as I can, and one club we had was Pots Grove Village. And I didn't realize that this was a parent-based club that has special needs kids, and the library was packed. And I kept looking around and saying, these parents don't get a break, but what do we do as Pots Grove to help these students? Do they have the playground equipment? And I know we're landlocked, so that's really where this all started. And my husband could test, I couldn't sleep that night because it really bothered me, and then, of course, the pandemic came. But this is really a playground, Adventure Grove, for those kids, is an inclusive playground. So Adventure Grove Inclusive Playground Incorporated is a nonprofit organization made up of local Pots Grove community members, along with volunteers from surrounding areas. We plan to bring people of all ages and abilities together to play. So we have received some grants from the Pottstown Wellness. We can thank them very much. And I gave everybody a packet, so I don't want to take up all of our 11 minutes here, but if you could take time and just go through it and familiarize yourself with the concept of Adventure Grove. And then on the very back, I invite you, on the 21st of September, we have a fundraiser with LiveWire. It's a rock and roll band. We're going to have food trucks, music, 50/50s, and all the money is going to go towards our playground equipment. So thank you for listening. Any questions? No?
Okay, at this time, one of the commissioners from West Pots Grove would like to speak.
I'm Howard Shawwell, West Pots Grove Commissioner. I just want everybody to understand that this is not a West Pots Grove thing. It is available for West Pots Grove, Lower Pots Grove, Upper Pots Grove, North Coventry, and Pottstown. And, you know, everybody's just kind of, it seems to get lost in that thing that this is what it's about. So we want, we want to make a deal with the land so that we all can utilize it, we all can enjoy it. And I'm going to leave you with this. I had a child who was special needs. There was nothing available for me to go to and use. So I want you to think, what if you had a child with special needs? What would you do? And how would you feel? Thank you.
I understand that the future airport layout plan approved by the BOA calls for construction of new airplane hangars in the area posed for the park. What's the current status of the new hangar construction at the airport?
Yeah.
You ask me?
Well, I mean, it's closer now to what it's been before. Put it that way. So we've been focusing on the airport for the past several years on upgrading the existing facilities that we have. Anything that we do in the borough, we've got a lot of aging infrastructure, so we always want to make sure that that's in good shape. We're now completed with the paving of the airport with the runway or the taxiway paving that'll commence this summer and late fall. We've painted the buildings, we've painted the tanks. We're going to be paving some aprons up there this summer, and then we're going to be putting a new roof on the maintenance hangar. So at that point, we've got all of our kind of maintenance items addressed at the airport, and we'll be in a better position now to actually move forward with constructing new facilities that would potentially bring revenue to the airport through hangar rentals.
And with the new hangars, what's the cost benefit analysis for constructing them?
So in our airport layout plan that you saw, there's also a JCP plan that's approved by the Bureau of Aviation, and on that plan, they called, I think in 2020, that it would be about 1.5 million, construct 22 clear span hangars at the municipal airport. Probably in today's dollars, it's closer to about 2 million. And you should know that we always have people on the waiting list. I think as of now, we've got over 20 people on the waiting list. So if you, if you would build the 22 hangars that are called for in the next phase of the, of the plan, they're clear span hangars, so they would be an upgrade to the hangars that we have there now, so you're going to get a higher revenue from those. So it's estimated that you'd probably get about 150,000 to 200,000 additional revenue per year at the airport for those 22 hangars.
Okay, so what would be the expected payout from the initial investment? What would be maybe the ROI?
So the ROI on that at 150 to 200,000 per year, there'd be, there'd be a $2 million project, we're eligible for a Bureau of Aviation grant that could cover half of it, so 1 million. The borough would have to come up with another million. We already have a half a million that's set aside in the long-term capital savings plan for the new hangars. So in total, it would be a million dollar outlay for the borough, and that'd be paid off in five to seven years. At least on 150 to 200,000 dollar revenue. Thank you.
Any other questions?
No, but I appreciate the questions.
Now, I guess everybody's in favor of a special needs park and, you know, and I mean, a playground and a veterans park. I just, I guess, we'll just, later on, you could give us parts of the specifics, how it might impact the airport, I guess, right? And is it imminent that it's going to cause trouble?
Well, yeah, that's our next phase of hangars that we want to build, what I just went over. That's the 22 hangars, so it would really make that not feasible, and we'd have to look to try.
Definitely. Last time I talked, it was still kind of on the air, but.
Yeah, because when we, when we built the T-hangers, that was like over a decade ago. I think that was back in like 2012. When they built that, they built the pavement and they built the stormwater big enough to accept the second phase of hangars. So we're already set up there from a site design standpoint for the second phase of the hangars. We don't have to do much site work. It's flat, we've got the stormwater facilities already in place, and we've got most of the paving in place, too. It's really not as feasible to try to look at relocating where we would put those hangars in, because there really isn't any, any other perfectly flat space where we wouldn't have to demolish an existing building or move something else around to try to accommodate the request from West Pots Grove.
Can I ask you a question? This area that they have on there, that's the highlighted area of the airport plan?
Yeah.
So that's what they would be like requesting to take from.
Yeah.
And what here right now is just empty, correct? There's no structure on those, in those areas.
Where the black boxes are, correct.
Yes, okay.
Correct.
And are hangars meant to be right up against that?
Yeah, the little black squares, those are each individual hangars. Yeah.
Okay. I think we're good.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We have another presentation from Health and Wellness Foundation. Welcome.
Right, 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 right.
No, good evening. Pottstown Borough Council.
Right.
Council President, Madam Mayor. My name's Howard Brown, Senior Program Officer at the Pottstown Area Health and Wellness Foundation, and I'm joined today by Foundation President Dave Prable, Christopher Spawski, and Thriving Communities Consultant Meredith Saussman, who you'll hear from shortly. I'm going to try to keep this brief, but just really excited to be here today to talk a little bit about a project that the foundation has prioritized for the community and has been working alongside the borough and many of the community stakeholders to move forward over the past three years. For more than 20 years, the Pottstown Area Health and Wellness Foundation has envisioned that area residents are living vibrant, healthy, and thriving lives, and our current strategy promotes health equity, education equity, and economic equity for the greater Pottstown area. As a community foundation, we work with donors to promote philanthropy and support the work of area nonprofits and advance initiatives that are prioritized by our dedicated board and staff. And we do this through our grant making or research and a number of special projects and collaboratives. And this Thriving Communities program is one of those special, special projects. So in April of 2023, the Pottstown Borough was one of 64 communities across the nation, just one of two in Pennsylvania, to be selected by the U.S. Department of Transportation for a two-year technical assistance grant that would lay the groundwork for Pottstown residents to equitably benefit from transit-oriented development, or ETOD. The Thriving Communities program was developed to address the fact that communities like Pottstown have historically been underrepresented in the attainment of federal resources that contribute to building and sustaining a thriving community. And the program aims to ensure that award recipients have the tools, the capacity to compete for federal aid and deliver quality infrastructure projects. And the Pottstown Area Health and Wellness Foundation, along with Montgomery County Planning Commission, as well as 20 other, 20-plus community partners, are dedicated to this project and the statement of work, and it's been a pleasure to work alongside Justin, Courtney, now Zach, and the borough team throughout the first year of this two-year project. Yeah, next slide. This important work was preceded by the pursuit of just work to understand more about equitable transit-oriented development. It was started in 2021 as a potential reinstatement of passenger rail from Redding through Pottstown and the Philadelphia began, and the School River Passenger Rail Committee was established by the Commissioners in Berks, Montgomery, Chester Counties. The foundation at that time funded two learning cohorts to explore ways that Pottstown could take proactive steps now to ensure that future development along this corridor is influenced by community-focused priorities and not just market forces. And we really tried to create a cross-sectoral knowledge base that incorporated borough leadership and other members, and again, thank you for your participation in that, in that very important work. And the education series was led by a national network called Impact that is dedicated to leverage transit mobility and development investments to create great places to live for all. And three focus areas emerged from that work. One was workforce development that yields economic activity, community engagement, so that all can share their voice and be part of the answers that emerged, as well as to ensure that development, when it occurs, that there's a proportional supply of affordable housing in Pottstown and the surrounding region, and also across the county. Following that educational series, a small delegation attended a national conference, the Impact National Conference, where we learned about the Thriving Communities Grant, and returned with a recommendation to pursue it, and, and yes, we won the grant. And the first year, we really focused on finalizing the schoolwork and working alongside the U.S. Department of Transportation and our RAB consulting firm, and, and refine those focus areas that you see on the screen. Because ETOD really requires increase in ridership, that leads to more, more, more density and encourages new development. The RAB work plan recommends the development of common knowledge among borough leadership, among community stakeholders, that really aims to learn best practices across the country to mitigate some of the factors that could occur from, you know, rapid increased development. So I'm not going to go into all of those, but the, the work plan really focuses in on some of those areas where, you know, traditionally, sometimes minority business owners are excluded from those development opportunities. It really encourages the support of community-wide strategic planning for the design, for the concepts, for the policies that really support sensible mixed-use equitable transit-oriented development, and, and encourage development along a multimodal transit system that is around a really established downtown Pottstown station. And lastly, really focuses on the lack of sometimes a technical capacity and staff capacity that municipalities have in order to identify and attain and actually win ETOD-focused public and private grant opportunities. So one of the ways that we are going to aim to do that is where, right now, this moment, we, we are at a time where preparation has met an incredible opportunity, and the Impact Conference is actually coming to Philadelphia in October. And what better way to meet that objective of the first bullet point, you know, to develop that common knowledge among community stakeholders and leadership than to attend a conference together as a group and, you know, just learn some of those best practices that are being implemented really across the globe? So one of the conference sessions is actually going to have attendees in October come to Pottstown to learn more about our community on a community tour similar to what took place recently with the youth department transportation. And funding from the U.S. Department of Transportation, along with more than $100,000 dedicated by the foundation, will support more than 90 community stakeholders to attend the conference. And that QR code that's on the screen will provide an open opportunity for community members to attend, in addition to those that the community and foundation or stakeholders have identified as, you know, priority recipients of those sponsorship opportunities. So some of you may have received a, an email from, from our team at the foundation. Really looking forward to going to this conference, learning some of these practices, really be a champion for Pottstown and all the great things that are actually happening here, and come back and learn. And at this time, I'll turn it over to Meredith, our consultant on the project.
Thank you, Howard. Good evening, councilors, Madam Mayor, Mr. Keller. Thank you for having me tonight. It's a pleasure to speak to you. When we heard that there may be a reconnection from Redding to Philadelphia, there becomes that moment of this can lift Pottstown. But when communities lift, that equitable word is the one that is most important. How do we lift everyone together and not leave people behind and see a type of gentrification that pushes people out who maybe have been here with families for 100 years? And so we took the opportunity in this time of learning to talk about what would it mean to look at Pottstown holistically, to look at workforce development, to look at education and interpreting it in multiple ways, to look at the manufacturers we have here, clean and smart manufacturing, and encouraging our young people to look at the opportunities to learn, to stay, to invest in their community because there is opportunity here, to have the life they dream of in a place that they don't have to grow up and leave, that they don't have to accept what's given to them, but rather what's offered in this community. And the equitable part of that is meant to give us a chance to work with the federal government, to get rid of the obstacles like money to doing what Pottstown could be. And so my call tonight is first to ask you to join us, as many of you have already, in starting to create a real shared vision for where this can go, because after a year of learning, now it's time to do something. And so we had a site visit with the DOT on June 12th and 13th. It went incredibly well. We have a report completed, and you'll get to hear that entire report in detail. And so we had a site visit with the DOT on June 12th and 13th. It went incredibly well. We have a report completed, and you'll get to hear that entire report in detail on a follow-up call on August 29th of 2024. So please, when you get that invitation, if you can, join us. And if you can't, do look at the recording. Our grant identification and submission has already begun in July of 2024, and we'll give a quick look into that next. And then we want to move all of our stakeholders toward a shared vision. What would it look like in Pottstown if we concentrated on and had the resources to do more workforce development, to redefine how we look at ourselves as a post-industrial community that has both service and manufacturing opportunity already here? What would it look like to include all of the voices to be an inclusive community that is also concentrated on the education, the transportation, and the living in the future of mixed use? We've had tremendous success in places like Bright Hope, right? We have a community where other parents, and this was shared at the site visit, are bringing their children to drop them off in that new playground that was built, saying, "I feel safe here, and my children's friends are here." We have a real opportunity to be a beacon of one of 64 communities in the United States for what it can look like and how it's done. Zach, would you move forward? So I talked about time to do something. Here are the current grants that have already been identified for us. The first one submitted by the foundation and Chris, leading it, is accessing federal funding. The William Penn Foundation has agreed that there's $1 million allocated, of which we can look to win a portion, to help us continue to move forward in gaining resources to apply for the rest. I won't read all of these to you. I'll run to the two that are done. The DOT Pilot Program for Transit Oriented Development will actually provide planning money for this group, all of us together, to make our plans, to fund that shared vision, that education, and how we move forward. That was submitted on 8/2, and I received a call from the Department of Transportation Monday, so submitted Friday, called Monday, that they needed one more piece of documentation to shore up our partnership together, which they received within 24 hours. It has already been submitted for review within the Department of Transportation. Now, I don't know what that means, but I know when the federal government calls me and then moves quickly, it's usually a good sign. So I'm going to keep my fingers crossed that that's still true. The rest of these are going through early 2025, and we continue to see weekly updates on federal grants that are available to us. Some of these include exciting things, like the ability to do a new transportation study, since your last one was done in 2020 during COVID. And of course, everything's changed now. The ability to fund that and look at new technologies and transportations for last mile in Pottstown, and to create funds that support where you already are to ensure that our current public transportation has ongoing dollars to support it over the future, to change the face of riders, to ensure our ridership has the access and ability to get there, and that we have the funds to keep everything repaired, replaced, and modern is really important. We are not looking at this as a one-and-done, but rather an investment in the future of Pottstown and ways to think about how we keep operations funded for years to come, not just on taxpayer dollars, but through creative other options and what we may be able to do with grants, depending on how they're limited by the federal government. So you'll see all of that here. We're also looking at workforce development. There is a group within Pottstown made up of nonprofits, educational leaders, some of you in the government leadership, some of our private, our private owners of corporations, talking together about what would reimagining workforce development look like here? Would you turn that over, Zach? Thanks. And then our next steps, completing our attendee registration for the IMPACT conference that Howard talked about. Please, when you get that invitation, consider coming. We're going to spend a couple of days in Philadelphia together. There will be orientation and prep for that. We're going to go to this with action items. What do we want to do and come back with? So it's not just a couple of days at a conference. It's real work for us to think about coming together on how we want to step forward as a team. Our Thriving Communities follow-up, again, please listen to that end of TOD and our report out on 8/29. We're convening that Pottstown delegation, as I said, to do orientation, educational assignments with the group. We're convening that workforce development group that came together. They agreed as a group with the TOD to continue to meet, to move things forward here. And then completing our vision draft, because when we apply for these grants, when we talk to the Department of Transportation, it's important that we are all talking to them about the same shared future so that they can see where we want to go together. I think that's it. I think that's, thank you. And thank you for listening to us tonight, for working with us, for all of the investment you've already made and continue to make, and questions?
Yeah, how many, you said you were going to have 90 stakeholders just from Pottstown themselves. How many stakeholders are we looking at as a group? And are these stakeholders both public and private?
They are. So there are people from for-profit corporations in the area, nonprofit, our government leaders, people from the foundations. It is a healthy mix of folks from this region.
Okay, so we're looking at 90-plus. How many?
Howard, we're looking at 90-plus right now. And if there are extras, we've had a couple of people say, "I'm interested. I'll pay for myself to go."
So that's going to be like cat herding, trying to get everybody on the same vision path. So I wish you luck.
Yeah, we have a great support team from the IMPACT conference. There are over 800 people that attend regularly, and they're partnering with us to manage the scholarship. We've, you know, done some things in this area before, but you're correct. The camaraderie, the work that follows will require, you know, just that collaborative spirit and want to change in positive ways.
I think what we found, in fairness, in a preview with the site visit, was that we had a lot of folks come together, many of whom were in this room. There's an excitement and an understanding that comes from those experiences where they say, "I see where you're going now, and I want to be a part of this."
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
The line striping bids are in?
They are due. We did not receive any bids. So what we're going to do with this is look for options to do line painting through Co-Stars, which is a municipal cooperative where the price is already bid for us. So, but we always like to try to bid it out to see if we can get a better price than Co-Stars, but we didn't have any, any takers this time.
Okay. How about mid-year budget adjustments?
Those are in your, in your packets. Most adjustments were reallocations for underfunded expenses. The, I think overall, if you look at it, there's fairly minor adjustments that took place. So what I think you can take away from that is that the departments and the department managers and heads have done a really good job of maintaining to their budget that they set in 2024, at least through six months of, of the year. There's a couple notable adjustments, one for parks regarding engineering costs for Brookside Park and a wireless bridge connection that was needed. And then insurance, there was some underbudgeting there for liability insurance because we don't always get those costs before we set the budget. So those two things were kind of unexpected things that came up where we had to shift from one line item to another line item. Again, the mid-year budget adjustments do not change the total amount in the final budget that was approved. It just moves them within the same fund between line items.
Okay. Any questions on that? No? Budgets. Okay, the Borough Authority audit.
That is complete now, and there were no findings. So thanks to Terry Kesick, our budget analyst, for the authority for putting that together, along with Marley Boone. And that'll be ready for your approval on Monday night.
Great. Mr. Hove, Oak Street subdivision.
Yes, the applicant is Gemco Capital LLC. They submitted a subdivision and land development plan for the property. The property is about 15,600 square feet. They're proposing to subdivide it into three lots. One of the lots will include the existing two-story dwelling, which will be renovated. And then they're proposing to construct one-story dwellings on each of the other two lots. This has been reviewed by your consultants and the Planning Commission. At the Planning Commission's meeting this month, they did recommend preliminary final approval of the subdivision and land development plan with some conditions, you know, including compliance with all consultant review letters. The applicant is also proposing to open the paper alley that's located to the rear of the properties by Barth Elementary. The Planning Commission recommended that the alley, if it's open, remain unpaved, but the applicant be responsible for the maintenance of it. The app, the rare situation here, typically the applicant also requests waivers. They did not do so in this case. We will list this for your consideration on Monday evening. But one note is that it's my understanding that staff is recommending that the applicant does pave the alley. And so the motion will be couched in terms of, of the alley being paved. And this will be listed for your consideration.
Okay, and so that'll be from my date. Next is the zoning application for 343 East High Street.
Yes, the applicant is seeking to operate a tattoo studio in the downtown under the zoning ordinance. This is classified as a personal care business B. This type of business is not permitted within the downtown. The applicant has filed for a variance, and there's a hearing scheduled on the application for August 20th. We'll list this for you for Monday evening for your consideration. As you know, you can, you are not required to take a position, but you could take a position in support or in opposition to the application. Just as some legal guidance on it, you may recall that, I think, within the last year, a similar application was presented to you for a tattoo studio, for a variance for a tattoo stu, variance for a tattoo studio in the downtown. On that application, you did take the position to support it. This type of zoning relief, however, is not precedential. It's specific to the property. And so just because you did that in that case, you're not bound in any way to take a position on this application, either for or against it. So you can review this with fresh eyes on Monday night.
Questions?
I think it would behoove the applicant, if they were here, counsel may be, you know, more interested in taking a position. But that's just my opinion.
You mean now or Monday?
Monday. Monday. I mean, yeah. I mean, because I think that's what happened with the other applicants, where you guys recommended it because you were here. You got to ask them questions. You, you thought they were, it was a good operation. And so that's why I think they got the support. So, but if they don't show up, I don't know if they'll get that or not.
Okay.
Unless there's any objection, we can invite the applicant first.
Yes.
Number 18 is street closure. Oh, the Lo Show amended application.
Yeah, so the Lo Show, they are extending their, their street closure out to College Drive due to the additional interest that they expect in the show this year. So essentially, on the western end, this would be the same closure arrangement as the Red Horse Car Show. So it really shouldn't be too much different than that. And if there's any questions, I know that Jamie is here. If you have anything for him.
No questions. Okay, list that for Monday. Street closure request from the Wind Cross School.
This, I believe, they do annually. It's the back-to-school picnic Friday, September 19th, from 4:30 to 8:30 p.m., Rosedale Avenue. They'd like to close the entire block in front of the school.
Okay. We did it last year, so listed for my date. And we have upcoming board vacancies. EAC, one three-year term to expire August 10, 2024. Construction Code Board of Appeal, one three-year term to expire August 8, 2024. And Ray Lopez is requesting reappointment for that. Human Relations Commission, one four-year term to expire October 11, 2024. Anybody interested, please let the staff know about this. And now we'd like to hear from our citizens with their comments.
Just a reminder, everyone will have five minutes. And first up, we have Shawna Levy. Can you give me your address, please?
127 Walnut.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Good evening, distinguished council members and Madam Mayor. I am here to air grievance, and normally I'm happy-go-lucky, but today I just wanted to make sure to, as Peggy said, let our voices be heard. I'm concerned with the condition of the streets, in particular, the 300 block of Walnut Street. I had to get my tire ride changed, and my car is smoking. Okay, it's old. Okay. But that street has been in that condition for many years. I moved here in Pottstown in 2020, 2006, around that time. And I love Pottstown, absolutely love Pottstown. And Lisa, yeah, I share, I share your feelings. I'm so impressed with Peggy's presentation. And I'm always posting things on my Facebook page about Pottstown, just random shots, beautiful. But with the change, Pottstown, the face of Pottstown is changing. Okay, and we're introducing new communities from different areas to Pottstown with transportation development. Okay, the lights on Pottstown, I mean, just the warmth. I don't want us to forget about kids playing in the streets, bicycles, jump rope, things like that. We have to consider safety, you know, not only for our cars, but for our children. I have to drive down this street at about five miles an hour. And I would challenge you, each and every one of you, to drive down Walnut Street and pass the 300 block. Don't go very fast because you might not make it. But just wanted to make sure that-
Sorry, so this is actually on our paving list for this year. So this will be done in the fall.
In the fall?
Yeah. Yeah. I wouldn't, usually wouldn't normally provide information, but I didn't want you to, you know, not have that.
It was done years ago, but they were maybe, we need to replace this sewer. Like, I live on that street. That's why I know. So it's, yeah, by the end of the-
So glad to know that. Thank you.
Yeah, so we, we wait until sometimes longer than we would want to because we know we have to replace utilities under the ground so that we don't replace the utilities, pave it, and then come back and replace a different utility later and then have to repave it again. So that's a better use of taxpayer money, so that's where we're at with that. If anyone ever wants to check on the status of our project, I encourage you to go to our Borough Pottstown Projects page, and you can find out a lot of information about what's going on this, this summer.
Wonderful. Is there any consideration made to, I believe that's the 700 block of Beach Street, because it is quite dark? And with the, you know, with the security issue or safety issues that we're facing, I was just wondering if that was also being considered as well? We need lights on that block. I have been going to the cemetery for a couple of years now, and that's one of the things that I noticed, how, how dark that area is. And it's a Hill School area, you know, so I'm not quite sure about, you know, who is taking care of that. But I'd like to see that also come up in some of your meetings as well. To focus on the safety is very important because, as I said before, our face is changing, and we're introducing other communities to our little Pottstown. Thank you.
And that concludes public comment.
Okay. Councilors, Roscoe, anything to say?
Actually, I was in town for a national event. I was kind of bummed that it got rained out yesterday. It's always a nice event that happens in my part of town, but maybe next year. Denver? Okay, well, that'd be nice. Sure.
Councilor Vanning?
Um, yes, I'd like to thank the Johnsons as well for their block party, especially Lena. She's one of their daughters who goes around and gets the petition signed to be able to have the, the block party. She does that all on her own and organizes it, and that's really wonderful. And it is a great block party. It's wonderful just to sit and hang out and talk. The other thing, please be mindful when driving of pedestrians walking. And when the signal says walk, we're gonna walk, so please don't run us over. I think there was one more thing, and I don't remember what it was. So I'm gonna say that's it, and I'll maybe write it down for Wednesday if it comes back. say that's it, and I'll maybe write it down for Wednesday if it comes back. Oh, I know what it was. It's because it's disappointing. So, uh, I don't like to say things like this. I was at a recreational thing just outside of town, and there was a couple young kids. They had an, an older boy with them, but young kids using really, really bad language. If you've talked to me, I, I use some pretty coarse language, but this was pretty bad for these children, and I did go talk to someone, and as soon as I told them what happened, the first thing they said to me is, oh, they're from Pottstown. I'm sure this doesn't happen often, but it took me back, and I said, well, I am also from Pottstown, just so you know. And I don't know what happened after. I know they were gonna talk to the kids, but be mindful, like Shawna said, we are introducing people from the outside to Pottstown, and I'm sure that these children probably don't have the best home life. So if you're neighbors of kids that don't have the best home life, do what you can, talk to somebody, maybe there's programs or something for those kids to get involved in. But it was really disappointing to hear that, so we could just be mindful. As we saw in Peggy's video, Pottstown is a wonderful, wonderful place, and I'm a transplant, and I just fell in love with Pottstown, and I've been here for over eleven years now. But I was really saddened to see that woman's reaction go, well, they're from Pottstown. We don't all behave that way, and we're a wonderful community. So please be mindful when we go out that we're better than that. That's all.
Vice President Lebedinsky?
Just to thank you for all the informative presentations today. Cleared up a lot of different questions and ideas.
Okay. Councilor Lindsay, anything?
Yes, I have a couple of things, but I want to chime in on Lisa's-
What did I do?
No, you're fine, you're fine. With the comment that the kids were from Pottstown. Kids came from the mother's womb. Tell them that next time.
I, yeah.
Now, Fourth of July. I love the Fourth of July parade and the, all the little stuff that goes on right there. We had a good time. It was really nice. So I'm gonna say that. Play Streets is done, and I wore my, wore my Play Streets shirt because I really like Play Streets. Had a good time. It was hot this summer. I don't know what, it was, it was really hot, but I went to a few of them, and of course, they ended at Spruce Street, and it was nice, and we had music, and it was really nice. I, I always enjoy Play Streets. Went to the farm last month also, and introduced a couple of people to the farm. They came to visit, so showed them that. The Carousel, went there Friday and Saturday. They had something both days, and it's always good to see in the Carousel. And then I didn't even know that they did some, that the news was there, and I took me and my, my friend, we went to, I showed them the carousel, and I went to work the next day, and, I mean, a couple of days later, and he said, I seen you on the news. I'm like, hmm, I was on the news? I'm thinking, I remember going to nothing, and apparently they was filming at the Carousel, and I was way back, I thought they were just doing something for the Carousel, and here it was on the news, and I didn't even know. So I had to look it up and find it. So, the Carousel, if you have an opportunity, go to the Carousel and always the putt-putt. And Lisa did a hole-in-one when we was there, and that Sunday for Joe Cerisi's thing, he had-
See on the green.
Yeah, that was, she did a good, she was, she hole-in-one, she did a good job. Yeah, she did a good job. There was a ribbon cutting, I didn't go to the ribbon cutting, but I went afterwards that Saturday at the car show. Changemakers, they had the, uh, ribbon cutting ceremony, and their location is six thirty-five East, East High Street. So if you have an opportunity, go there, it's really nice in there, and the AC is wonderful. It was nice. And the car show, I went before it started raining, so I don't know what happened after the rain, but it was nice. It was a lot, it was not as many cars, because they anticipated on the rain, and you know how folks is with their cars, they don't want to get the rain on. And I think that's it for me.
Alister Minostri?
Yeah, the only thing that I want to talk about tonight is something that I've been noticing recently. Every day I drive up and down High Street several times a day. People aren't being safe, man. They're not being safe. They are walking all over the place. They are walking, not at crosswalks, they are meandering around. Someone is going to get hurt. Please, please, if you see people doing that, please tell them to stop. It is dangerous. Someone's going to get hurt, and I don't want Pottstown to have a law named after it because somebody got hurt, because, because somebody will get hurt if they, if people don't start paying attention. I don't know how to do it. It's just to hope that somehow, if we can get the word out, can, can you stop doing that? Can you be careful? I don't know if you see that.
I do.
I, I, I see it all the time, and somebody is going to get hurt, and some driver's life's going to be ruined because somebody walked out in front of him or didn't stop, okay? And his life's over because he's got, he's got problems, and all he did was drive down the road.
Bikes, too.
Please, please, for the love of everything, can we just be careful? And if we see people doing that, just tell them to stop or to go down to the crosswalk. They're protected there.
Well, they're not, but I hear you-
Legally.
How do we fix it? Because I see what you're talking about-
Community awareness, I think, like with programs or something like that.
So it's everywhere. We're bad on both sides. And do we get all of our walking signals fixed so they speak? Some of them don't work, and that's a problem.
It was funny. I was in Quebec, I was in Quebec, okay? And the funniest thing I saw there was, I'm sitting at the, at the stoplight, okay? And, you know, the little guy with the, you know, the, the thing there, the don't walk, and they're actually not walking. They're sitting there, and there's not a car within a block either way, and these people are sitting there. And of course, people from America are like, let's go, come on, let's go. And these people are safe, and I guess, I would imagine that the, the Canadians probably have less, if that's how they do, they, they probably have less, less traffic fatalities with pedestrians. But man, I don't know what the answer is, but I just, maybe community awareness or something to say, please, stop doing it, because somebody's going to get killed.
Let's not kill each other.
Yeah.
That are-
That's all, that's all I got.
Community awareness?
Mayor Henry?
Actually, I agree with, with Andrew. I mean, every day I literally pull my car in front of kids, and they don't know who I am, so I look like a crazy person, but because they're in the street and there's somebody not watching, or their ball's in the street, and they're constantly playing in the street, and I pull over and I tell them, please get off the street, you're gonna get hurt. And then, because they don't know who I am, I guess they give me their point of view on that. But yeah, all the time, so-
It's not just the children, it's adults, too, and that's why I'm scared. I'm just scared, because somebody's gonna get hurt, and I don't want that.
Oh, and I learned something. So, just an FYI, this was news to me. If your property is affected by a catastrophic loss, i.e. a fire, earthquake, winds, tornado, explosion, what have you, you need to then call the county tax assessment office. They do not automatically know that that has occurred to your property, and your property will continue to be assessed at the value it was assessed at before this catastrophic loss. So sometimes the county does know, and will send you a letter, and you only have like twenty days to respond to that notice. You can always appeal yearly, August first is the deadline every year, but just so you know, you have to go do that yourself. The Borough does not do that for you.
Okay, thank you. I have good news. I received a letter from Montgomery County Housing Authority, as did our mayor and our manager, and it's, the reason for delivery is emergency response. It says, as you may recall, on May thirty, twenty twenty-four, at approximately six AM, there was a fire in one of the apartments on the fifth floor of the nine-story Robert P. Smith Towers in Pottstown. Smith Towers contains eighty residential units serving income-qualified elderly and/or disabled populations. While the MCHA mourns the loss of life of one of our longtime residents, we are thankful the losses were not more extensive. We write today to thank the Borough of Pottstown for their participation in the immediate and ongoing response to this tragic, tragic event. The Borough's fire, police, codes, administrative, public works departments, and park were instrumental in assisting the MCHA and our residents in the minutes, hours, and days after that event. On behalf of the MCHA Board of Directors, staff, and residents, thank you so much for the tremendously strong partnership between the Borough of Pottstown and our authority, signed by Joel A. Johnson, the executive director. And I just wanted everybody out there to know that we've got quite a team here. All the departments here in Borough Hall, all the volunteers, our fire departments, the EMTs, our police department. We, we all have the best of interest in Pottstown today and in the future, and I want to thank all the people that were involved in this and, and helped pull us through that tragedy. And that's my good news for tonight. We've been recognized, and I appreciate it. Meeting adjourned.
This conference is no longer being recorded.